Okay, we're going to start recording.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, all right. Well, good evening, everyone. Be a remote and video or phone. For our Albany City Council meeting for May 2020. And I'll call the meeting to order. And Jorge, would you like to put up the Pledge of Allegiance? And we'll just kind of have a moment of silence while everybody reads it to themselves, recites it to themselves. Thank you. Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay. And first then, we've got roll call. And Allison, I believe you were there. If you could do roll call, please.
Olson. Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Alex Johnson.
Here.
Mike Sykes.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Canopa.
Here. So, all right. Thank you. And it looks, some of the councilors have shifted on my screen here. So I'll have to relocate when we get to that. Okay. We have some things this evening. And one, which is Historic Preservation Month, which is disappointing. Usually, we do a great presentation. Staff does a presentation on some of the projects that were accomplished during the year of property owners that had revitalized and restored a historic property. So a lot of that because of the COVID-19 and shutdown. We're unable to do a lot of the fun activities that we do for the month of May for Historic Preservation Month. So with that, I will read our Historic Preservation Month, May 2020. Whereas Albany is well-known for its large and varied collection of historic buildings that date from the 1840s through the 1950s. And whereas Historic Preservation is an effective tool for economic development, promoting tourism, revitalizing neighborhoods, creating livable and sustainable communities, fostering local pride, and creating community character. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role history and tangible aspects of heritage having shaping our lives and communities now and in the future. And whereas this place matters is the theme of National Historic Preservation Month celebrated across America and sponsored by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. And whereas Historic Preservation Month provides an opportunity for citizens of all ages and backgrounds to celebrate the special places that are meaningful to them and their communities, and the importance of preservation and its place in all of our lives. Now therefore, I, Sharon Canopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2020 as Historic Preservation Month in Albany. And I encourage all residents to take time this month to appreciate Albany's many historic resources and to participate in activities celebrating our heritage. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 13th day of May 2020. Okay, but there is some smaller type activities that are taking place for Historic Preservation Month. So I welcome everyone to check them out. Next is Police Week. So this is the first time we've done this proclamation. And I think this is a great proclamation for our community. And mostly during the times that we are in right now because of the shutdown due to the COVID-19 virus. So Police Week, May 10 through 16, 2020. Whereas the Congress of the United States of America has designated the week of May 10 through 16, 2020 to be dedicated National Police Week. And May 15 of each year to be Police Memorial Day in honor of the federal, state, and municipal officers who have been killed or disabled in the line of duty. And whereas it is known that, on average, one law enforcement officer is killed in the line of duty somewhere in the United States every 55 hours. Since the first known line of duty death in 1786, more than 21,000 US law enforcement officers have made the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas law enforcement officers, including City of Albany police officers, are our guardians of life and property and defenders of the individual rights of freedom. And whereas the City of Albany is proud of our law enforcement officers and wish to recognize their commitment to the public safety profession. And whereas the Albany Police Department and officers provide the highest quality services and committed to the highest professional standards, working in partnership with our community to meet the challenges of reducing crime, creating a safe environment, and improving our quality of life. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City of Albany designates the week of May 10 through 16, 2020 as Police Memorial Week. In the City of Albany, to call attention to Albany police officers for the outstanding service they provided to our community. The City Council also calls upon our residents and businesses to express their thanks to the men and women who make it possible for us to leave our homes and family in safety each day and return to our homes knowing they are protected by men and women willing to sacrifice their lives if necessary to guard our loved ones, property, and government against all who would violate the law. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 13th day of May 2020. So a lot of those words there have a lot of meaning and very truthful. And that is a wonderful proclamation. So Chief Harden, I don't know if that was you that brought this one forward, if this came from your former community or not.
It's a national tradition. May 15 has always been our Memorial Day. And it's, I think, as you stated in the proclamation, particularly important. There's nearly 50 officers across the country that have died as a result of the COVID virus as well. So it's a particularly tough year for corrections and law enforcement. So we're very mindful of that and take that very seriously. And we appreciate the council making the time to recognize it this week.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Well, thank you. Thank you so much for all their hard work. And we're proud of our Albany Police Department. They do a fantastic job.
Thank you.
And we're very fortunate, so have quality, quality staff.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Okay. Next is Public Works Week. This is May 17 through 23, 2020. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of critical importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of our community. And whereas the public works programs and services provided to our community are in terrible part of our residents' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed community is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as drinking water, treatment and distribution, wastewater collection and treatment, stormwater management, street maintenance, engineering services, and transportation systems. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these services, programs, and facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works professionals. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the community's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And whereas 2020 marks the 60th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Sharon Canopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17, 2020, to May 23, 2020, as Public Works Week. In the City of Albany, and I call upon all residents and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public work services and to recognize the contributions that public works employees make every day to our health, safety, economic vitality, and the quality of life. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 13th day of May 2020. And it does really show this time, our city's services are all very much essential services in our community. So, and during this time, no matter what, with the virus and shutdown, we have got to provide. So we're very grateful to the wonderful staff that we have in providing our quality services. Okay, and that is it for our proclamations this evening. And next, we do have a public hearing. And this one is regarding the CDBG. So with that, I'll call the public hearing open at 7:25 PM. And I will call for the staff report. And I believe Ann is on. And Catherine? Yep, okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Hello, councilors.
You want to turn your...
Tonight, can you hear me? Oh, whoops.
You, but we can't see you. Love to hear.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Can you hear me now? I'm sorry about that. I turned my volume down earlier. So the city is required to hold a public hearing and a 30-day comment period anytime we need to make substantial amendments to any of our Community Development Block grant plans. And tonight, we are taking comments from the public regarding substantial amendments to the 2018 Action Plan and then the city's five-year strategic plan, which spans the 2018 to 2022 time period. And you may remember, at the last council meeting, amendments were made to the 2019 Action Plan to add the CARES Act funding into that plan and also to reallocate some unspent money to emergency business loans. So you'll see on the screen here, I went ahead and showed you a projected five-year budget. And because the 2018 and 2019 plans are in that five-year plan, we need to amend both the 2018 and the five-year plan. So the numbers in red show you where those amendments are. And tonight, we're asking to hear comments on the 2018 amendments for that action plan, which would move unspent money totaling $65,000 to two different programs, $36,000 to housing rehabilitation and $29,000 to emergency business loans, which would be part of our, combined with the CARES Act funding, to help businesses through the pandemic. And then the other amendments are ones related to the plans that have already been amended and changing the totals for the 2018 to 2022 time period. So this is also an opportunity for the city to hear comments from the community about any needs that could be addressed with Community Development Block Grant programs and also to hear about our performance on these programs. And with that, I have not received any comments about these amendments tonight. And I don't think anyone has signed up to testify, at least they had not by 5 o'clock. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Yes. No one did sign up. Oh, Bessie?
Yep. Ann, can you tell me why, since we don't get a lot of funds, why is there always a carryover?
Well, that's a good question. There's not always a carryover, but we're trying to estimate what activities to fund every year. And we do agency consultations to identify needs in the community. And priority needs have been for more affordable housing. Other needs have been to reduce homelessness. And there have been some agencies trying to find property to purchase, to build new affordable housing. And because of the housing market, that is the reason why we have carryover funds, because there has not been a successful property or project that has come forward to create new housing. And in addition, the Down Payment Assistance Program was moving along fairly well. And then the market changed. So those are the two areas where we've not seen activity. So we want to reallocate those funds to programs where there is demand.
Okay, and then one other quick question. When we give out the funds to the different agencies, do they give a report back as to how they use them and what's done with them?
Yes, they do. And I apologize trying to keep things streamlined. I normally will do a PowerPoint showing the performance measures from the year. And I have not done that this meeting or last meeting, trying to keep things short and with the virtual meetings. But yes, agencies report to me quarterly, and then they do a year-end report. And so we don't actually give them funding initially. They actually have to report to me before they're reimbursed for funds.
Oh, I see. All right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
Is there any other councillor that's putting up? I can't see all of you. I can only see four of you. Okay. So with that, nobody had signed up before. But Marilyn, did you receive any testimony of anything?
No.
Okay. All right, so is there anyone else who would like to speak that is attending the meeting? All right. Not seeing anyone. With that, I will close the public hearing at 7:31 PM. And do we, we needed to have two motions, or can we do both in one motion?
One motion. It's one resolution.
On page eight?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Counsel, what would you like to do with this item?
I'll move to approve.
I second it.
Okay. A discussion.
I have a question for Ann. Will you be bringing that report back to us at some point to kind of tell us where the money was spent and where it's gone?
Yes. So every year, we do a report to HUD, and we hold a public hearing on that report. And that is usually in September.
Okay.
But at any time, I can provide reports to you on performance throughout the year on the different programs. So just let me know if you have any questions about a specific program.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, anything else? Okay. Motion's on the table. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? All right, motion carried. Thank you, Ann. Okay, next is Business from the Public. And there was, I did not receive anybody that submitted by 5 PM. So I don't believe unless it was somebody that... Marilyn, you did not receive anything else?
I did not.
Okay. All right. Next, Ann, is on page 16. This is the second reading of ordinance. Ann, I believe you are there. Would you like to be reading?
Yep. All right. An ordinance, amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings for the property located at 2710 Grand Prairie Road Southeast, Lynn County Assessors Map Number 11S-03W-17D, Tax Lot 101.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
All right. And motion's been made in a second. Any discussion on this item?
Yes, I intend to vote no on the ordinance. I feel that going from an apartment house to an even bigger apartment house is a mistake in that location, particularly when there's really no parking involved. There's a church parking lot next door. But my understanding is the church isn't interested in sharing our parking lot with this apartment house. So I think it's going to be... Going to be problematic, and I intend to...
Okay. Anyone else have any comments?
I...
Mike? Yep.
The parking, the parking issue, from my understanding is, is they can't build anything there unless it goes through the planning commission and gets approval for the site plan, the size of the structure, what's in the structure, and parking places, or they can't even get a permit to build it. Is that not correct? Or am I missing something?
I believe that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, Alex?
So why are we voting to approve it when that, has those other things been done?
Right, and what, years back, we used to always have a zone change with a site plan at the same time. So then we could always kind of see really what was being proposed. That changed quite a few years back. And so a zone change, they do not have to submit the site plan. So then we're just kind of left making a decision. Do you want it to be higher density or not? Or do you want that zone change, if it was, say, going from residential to commercial or mixed use? So it's, I liked our older process we used to have more than what we have today.
So my concern is, is that's a busy corner.
Yeah.
Especially when South Albany lets out of school and there's higher density, no parking there. My concern is with the amount of kids, you know, to and from school. And then also along that way, there's, you know, sports activities and things like that. I would prefer to see a plan as far as their parking than just approving it wishing or hoping that they would have parking. Counselor Kellum?
Counselor Kellum has a question.
Yeah, Rich?
Well, I go back to what Mike said. I don't think David and company are going to let anything happen there that doesn't... Doesn't fit in the city's plan. And that means they have to have parking as per whatever the rules are in effect. Either trust the system or you don't. It's, and you look at where this is, you've got public on two sides. You've got a church parking lot on one side. And toward the south is, is, I guess, some house. So I don't see a whole lot of problem. It's not like this is something where these people are going to be looking in somebody's back window.
Well, I think probably not so much the part of it. I think the concern would be the amount of transportation. It'd be additional traffic coming in and out of there. It sort of reminds me of the apartments, a plum tree that was put on Hill and... Hill and 34th Street. And there has been quite a few, you know, wrecks coming in and out of there because you've got that entrance so close to the traffic signal. And that's sort of, this property's going to be sort of faced with that same issue. And so it's just, right now, it is apartments. That's what it's zoned for. But they're requesting to go higher density than what we had for the original zoning. That's your question. Do you feel it should be higher density or not there? Yeah, Bessie?
Yeah, I was going to say, the good thing about, there's going to be two ways out of the development. And it is far enough away from the stoplight that I don't think there's going to be a big problem. Yeah, there's traffic there, but with the stoplight, it's going to actually kind of keep it in check a little bit, I think, you know. I thought too, I went down and saw it because it was so close to where we live. And I thought, how are they going to get out? But apparently, they've been doing it all along. The church has been, I mean, that driveway's going out. And it seems a little tight to me, but I think the traffic signal there is going to actually help keep it in check. And, you know, the thing it is, is we have to go with the density because we have to do the infill. We can't, you know, we've got this thing we call the urban growth boundary. And you got to infill what we've got.
Well, it'd be interesting to see if they're allowed to use that church driveway to get out of their property. I kind of doubt that they will. Seems to me, using somebody else's property for your business was not quite right.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Mike?
I believe that was addressed the last time this came up, that that was part of the site plan review, that they were going to be using that. And that was already cleared. Again, I have to go back that I've got to trust the planners. And they also, I believe, they said something about the study on the traffic that it wouldn't significantly impact the traffic patterns at that intersection.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone?
I agree.
Okay. All right, there's a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Aye. Allison, I think we need a roll call.
I'm here. All right. Olson.
No.
Bessie Johnson.
Yes.
Alex Johnson.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Coburn.
No.
Kellum.
Yes.
That's two noes.
Okay, ordered to. All right, motion carried. Okay. Next, council, it is approving the purchase of four transit buses. It starts on page 23. Actually, thinking about with this ordinance and staff didn't send it to me, but we probably needed to have had a script on that. David, shouldn't there have been the notice of decision?
Mayor, I think you might be missing Agenda Item 7.
Oh, I'm sorry, but no, I'm going back up to second reading of ordinance. And David, for questions, we should have read the decision.
Yes, there should be a copy of the notice of decision in your packet, Mayor. Not the council packet, but in the folder for the signatures.
Marilyn already picked it up from me today. You know what?
Let me go see if I can find it, Mayor.
I've got the agenda from last time. Let me look at it. Well, but then I wouldn't have the script. I always give you guys the script back. Okay, so Marilyn can...
Yes.
So if you can find it, and then I'll read it later.
Got it.
Okay, all right. We will go to item number seven. And then we will come back to do that formality over the notice of decision for item six. So item seven, and thank you, Peter, for catching that for me. And first reading of ordinance, this starts on page 19. And Tom?
Yeah, was Chris here? Is Christian Dell on tonight? So if there was any questions?
I don't, I don't remember.
Don't believe he is.
Okay. I'll go ahead and read. And if someone was wondering what this is, it's just, there's a, there was a Scrivener's error in the last ordinance dealing with the central area, Albany parking area. And so that's just been corrected. The changes are made there in red. So I'll go ahead and read it. An ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code AMC Title 13 by the revision of Chapter 13.21.112, titled "Central Albany Parking Area", declaring an emergency.
Counsel?
Looks to pass.
Does anybody want to read a...
I've got a question. Do you want to read it?
Yep, we will, Dick. Go ahead. Go ahead. Somebody's got some typing going or something, I'm hearing. Well, I think it was Marilyn. Okay, Dick?
I can't hear him.
Yes, the addition of, the addition of this ordinance has to do with towing.
That's correct.
And are we? Does the person get warned before they're towed, or do they?
Yes, they do.
Walk off and then come back and find their car gone?
No, they do, they do get a warning for, yes.
Okay.
And they were, and they were towing anyone? Go ahead.
They ignore the warning, do they get towed to Salem or Eugene? Or do we follow our practice that we're not going to allow towing to?
Right, we would not do, and, and we, we passed that ordinance a while back where we don't tow to Salem or Eugene. But I would, and I would defer that to APD because they'll be the ones that order the tow. But I have, I do not know that they would, I, I can't imagine they would tow out of the city because we, we don't do that anymore. We, we never.
I just wanted to make sure that was still in effect.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, the ordinance to be read a second time and title only.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried, so second reading. Sean?
An ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code AMC Title 13 by the revision of Chapter 13.21.112 titled Central Albany Parking Area and Declaring Emergency.
I'll make a motion for the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, and any more discussion?
I didn't hear the numbers, did the numbers get recorded?
Dick, what was that again?
I, I just got a bunch of static instead of the numbers. I'm wondering if the numbers got officially recorded in our record.
What numbers?
The numbers of the ordinance.
Oh.
Did it, did it not come through clearly?
Okay, the ordinance.
So I'm not, which?
I couldn't hear them.
Which number? Numbers?
Yeah, Allison, did you pick them up? Were you able to pick them up?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
We're talking about this, this ordinance reading?
Yes. Why don't I, why don't I just read it again real quick, just to clear it up? Does that work? Okay.
Yeah.
And or, here goes. An ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code AMC Title 13 by the revision of Chapter 13.21.112 titled Central Albany Parking Area and Declaring an Emergency.
Yep. I heard it that time.
Oh, okay. So Andy, there's been a motion and a second, any more questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you Sean. And now we have the four transit buses, and I think I saw Barry on. Is Barry gonna be the lead on this one, Chris, or are you?
It'll be me, Mayor.
Okay, so this starts council on page 25.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. This is an item, staff is requesting council approval to purchase a total of four transit buses. Two are for Albany Transit and two for the Limpin' Loop. The buses will be paid for using a combination of city, state, and federal dollars. They're being purchased through the State of Oregon contract, which was a competitively bid contract managed by ODOT. Because we're also using federal dollars, the state requires staff to also issue a request for quotations to the vendors on the state contract, which we did. We're purchasing two 35-foot buses for Albany Transit and two 40-foot buses for the Loop. The reason for the difference is that the Albany Transit buses are a little bit smaller because of their, where they drive, which is primarily in town, which typically has sharper turns and a shorter bus better navigates those. And ridership, we select the buses based on the average peak hour ridership. In Albany Transit, the average peak hour ridership varies between 25 and 35 passengers. And on the Loop, it can vary between 45 and 80, which is not ideal. The Albany Transit buses together will cost just over $963,000. And the Loop buses are just over $973,000. They're primarily being paid for with state funds through the State Transportation Improvement Fund that was passed a few years ago. We're also using some Federal Transit Administration Section 5307 funds for capital equipment purchase, and the match for that is coming from our equipment replacement budget here at the city. The purpose of the buses is to replace old buses, but also will help us implement the transit development plans that have recently been completed for both ATS and the Loop. And so we'll be able to offer more routes and more coverage on our routes. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, questions? Mike, and then Rich?
Mike?
Kellen?
My, my question is this, what is the city's portion of the funds that were coming out of our equipment replacement? How much is that?
$88,000 is what we budgeted. It's match for one of the buses.
Just one? What's our total cost?
The total cost is like almost $2 million.
No, 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 no. No, what is the Albany's, the city of Albany's total cost? $88,000?
$88,000. So we have to pay on capital grants, we have to pay 20% of the total cost of the bus. We're using a capital grant for only one bus. And 20% of the cost is 88, about $88,000. That's what we've budgeted for, for that bus.
20%, 1.9 million is 88,000?
No, no. The other three buses are purchased 100% without city local funds. We've put together other thing for those. So three buses are completely paid for with state funding. One bus is being paid for 80/20 with federal funding, the 80% of one bus, and city funding being 20% of that bus.
Okay, all right, Rich, then Alex?
Question to size of the bus. I understand 40 footer for the Loop. I guess 35 footer when, you know, I keep seeing empty buses now. Or empty buses or buses with two and three people in them. To my way of thinking, a 35 footer running around empty is not nearly as efficient as a 20 footer or a 22 footer or whatever it is.
Right. Yeah. So we've, yeah, we've talked about this before. And we don't have the money or really the capacity to change buses hourly depending on the demand. And we do have peak hourly demands on Albany Transit system where we're carrying 30 people to 35 people in the bus. So if we did, as you said, and had a combination of sizes, we would have to try to anticipate and switch buses based on when we thought we would need the smaller bus versus the bigger bus. We can't do that. So we purchased the buses based on peak hourly demand.
Which is incredibly inefficient. You know, I guess, when your, when your feet are on fire, don't juggle gasoline. If you read the paper, if you listen to the news, the, the state is cutting back 17%. Which means our thought of $11 million shortfall in funds for next, next time around is nothing compared to what we are liable to see. I, I think the optics of buying, unless you have to have it right now, is awful. But beyond that, I think we need to buy the most efficient thing we can, we can buy. I just don't like the idea. That's why.
Alex?
Chris, is this gonna affect the number of routes or the timing of the routes? Having these newer vehicles? As far as, you know, currently people complain about them not having access to public transportation after a certain hour. Some people complain about not being able to get to city council meetings because the buses are already shut down. How's that gonna impact the availability or accessibility of the buses?
Yeah, so I briefly touched on that. We have new, newly written development plans for both Albany Transit and the Limpin' Loop. And those comments, we hear those comments, both for the Loop and for Albany Transit, about the time the routes end is not ideal, as well as, you know, just the availability of the transit system. So both systems are scheduled to be improved. It, you know, everything's a little bit up in the air, but that's the intent of these buses is essentially we're gonna double the capacity of the Limpin' Loop, which is our most highly in-demand service. We've already extended the hours. We did that in January, and then we had to dial it back because of COVID-19. But we're extending hours later into the evening, and then we're also adding routes on both the Loop and ATS. And that's part of the purpose of this bus purchase.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Bessie?
Yeah. Excuse me, Chris, are these buses, in addition to what we already have? In other words, the ones we have are in running condition, not bad? And so these are gonna be in addition to? Barry might have to help me. I believe that these are two are replacement and two are addition. I'm not sure though, Barry, can you help?
Maybe, I unmuted myself, so hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
Great. Sweet, thank you, Chris. These are, all, all four of these buses would be considered expansion buses because, as you said, the, the buses that we have in our fleet, we have six full-size buses right now, are all within their useful life and not eligible for replacement. In two years, the buses that we bought under the ARA program will be eligible for replacement, and we'll be looking to replace those two buses at that time.
Thank you. And then one other question. With, with this virus going on, and if the schools are shut down where there's, there are only, you know, virtual studies, is this needed at this time? I mean, I'm kind of like Rich, I have, I have this thing about, here we're gonna buy four buses when we're, everybody's in such a dire need of funding. And so, I mean, I realize it's a good deal, but I wondered, could it, is it gonna be available later? Where we didn't have to do it like right now? Well, so here's the, there's a few things there. Number one, the buses take over a year to be manufactured. So we would not be receiving them. We anticipate receiving them, the earliest would be about this time next year, but probably closer to next December. So that's one thing. So if you want to expand your service, you have to go ahead and order early. The second thing is, these funds that are being used to purchase the buses can't be used for police, fire, or, or anything else. They're transit funds. Whether they come from the state or the federal government, they are all public transit monies in the federal. Nobody likes you to mix your money. So, so that's, that's not really, as much as we would like to be helpful to others, that this money wouldn't help anyone else. And then as far as the questions about school, you know, we are severely, we've had a severe reduction in ridership. That's the truth. And so has every public transit agency and the company in the country. And we're working closely with LBCC and OSU to understand what their plans are. So no, ridership right now is, is really, really low comparative. But as I said, the plan, there's a need in our community for ridership. For instance, on ATS, sort of informally, we've been tracking where people are going. And most people are, are riding to grocery stores or to the hospital, places like that. There's not, there's, people are still going where they just need to go. And there are just people in our community that do not have another way to get there. So part of our hope is that we're order now, we'll be in a good position to implement our expanded plans when the equipment gets here. And that's really what we're trying to line up now. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Well, it might be a value to buying the buses now because the federal dollars are available. I'm gonna guess the feds are gonna cut back because the same issues we have locally that, that Mike and Rich have talked about, that you're gonna see on the county, you're gonna see on the state, you're gonna see nationally. So maybe a year or two from now, funds aren't available and grants to buy new buses. That makes a little bit of sense. But our bus system is heavily subsidized, which is typical of any public transportation. And I can't believe that, that we're gonna expand this. I mean, it's just, that part doesn't make sense to me. The analogy that I've made before is you build a new park and you don't have any money to, to maintain it. I don't know where we can get the money to hire new drivers and expand the system and so forth. So I will vote for it because I see a value in getting the buses now, as I explained. But expanding the, the transit system, I think is, is a conversation for another day.
I think Counselor Coburn, I can, I, we can talk about it more at our leisure in another meeting, if you'd like. But just quickly, the, in 2017, the legislature passed a new funding mechanism for public transit that created this Special Transportation Improvement Fund, the STIF funds that we refer to. And those are both operating funds and capital funds. So for instance, one of these buses, or maybe two of them, are purchased with a capital grant from STIF. We also applied for and were approved, operating funds for, specifically for the expansion of service of both the Loop and Albany Transit Service. The STIF funds come from, I believe it's a half of a percent of payroll tax that was implemented in 2017. And there is some concern that it might, it will be affected by this most recent economic downturn, like everything else. But up until this point, had been coming in and higher than anticipated. So the funds are there to expand the service without relying on local funds. The STIF funds are state funds and don't require match like the federal funds do. So that's a short answer, that we're not trying to expand service without thinking about how we could pay for it in the long run. And, and until now, it had seemed quite certain. And we'll just have to see what happens with the economy after this, this summer.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Okay, yeah, Mike?
Sorry, what happens if we wait? Is there any harm in waiting?
Well, we had, the, the harm is that we had presented plans to implement these expanded expansions of our service. And so we would just have to explain to the, the funding source people why we would be delayed in that expansion. That would be the big harm. I mean, plus, things get expensive, so the cost would certainly go up. But the money, I don't think would disappear. The STIF money, I don't think the state would take it back. The 5307 money, we can carry over. So I don't think the money would go away. But Barry can tell me if I'm... But, um, Barry can tell me if I'm missing anything else, but the, the big harm would be that we would not be doing what we said we were gonna do when we were gonna do it. And that's, I don't know how much harm that is.
I, I do know that we've used some of our used buses. That's been some of our tour buses, like for Parks and Rec and um, other, you know, tourism type, um, things with the senior center. So it does give us an opportunity when we rotate new ones, we can use some of the older ones for, um, you know, some of our, um, events and, um, for other programs too. So, okay, any other questions? Um, if not, there is a resolution on page 25.
I move to read the resolution.
Adopt it.
I mean, move to adopt the resolution.
Right.
Right?
Okay. Second.
Okay, so second. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I heard two. Is that correct? Mike and Rich. All right, it passes four to two. Okay, and Counsel, I'm gonna go back up to Marilyn sent me over, um, the notice of decision. So this would be under the motion that passed, which was four to two for the Graham Curry Road, 2710 Graham Curry Road Southeast Zone Change. Um, the city's decision may be appealed to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, Luba, per ORS 197.830. A notice of intent to appeal the plan and or zoning map amendment shall be filed with Luba no later than 21 days after notice of decision is mailed or otherwise submitted to parties entitled to notice. Okay, I think normally there's a little bit more of that script, but I think we got most of it there.
Got the gist.
All right. Thank you, Marilyn, for sending that over. And that takes care of that item. Now we're down to 8B, which is applying for House Bill 2001 Amendment Grant Funding. And Jeff, I think I saw you online.
You did, thank you. But David's gonna take the lead and I'll, I'll supplement as needed.
Okay, all right, David.
I, I have a request. And this member that's presenting, can they please show their video? See their face?
Yeah, hopeful too. Okay. Okay, David, I think we missed on Chris, so hers was.
There we go. There it is.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, uh, the request here tonight is to request that, uh, the mayor and city council, um, adopt a resolution that shows support for our application to the State of Washington's DLCD for $165,000 grant that would provide funding for, uh, housing, um, House Bill 2001 code assistance. There we go. So, um, this is, if, uh, you don't recall, House Bill 2001, um, is known as the Middle Housing Bill. And it will require cities to update their comprehensive plans and development codes to allow more flexible middle housing options. Now, those are things like duplexes and triplexes and quads on properties that are historically zoned for, uh, single-family residential dwellings. Cities with more than 25,000 residents must implement House Bill 2001 by June of 2022. Those that do not implement their own regulations will be forced to use the state's model code that goes beyond the minimum requirements of House Bill 2001. So, the long and short of this is that this grant will help us implement the changes that we need to have in the code that the law requires. Um, and in so doing, we can craft the, the legislation here locally in a way that considers Albany's unique context, rather than having to adopt like a boilerplate, um, model code that the state's putting together. So with this, all this does is obligates the city to simply, um, support the request for a grant. Uh, we are proposing, uh, $15,000, 9% match of the total project cost, but we can do that uh, through staff time on the project, so it's not a hit on our budget. So with that, are there any questions?
Any questions? Um, let's see. Okay, um, no questions. And Counsel, there's a resolution on page 28.
I move to adopt.
Certainly.
All right. So, okay, and this is one of those items, Mike, you're talking about earlier on cutbacks. And I think if I remember right, the legislature appropriated over $3 million for DLC D to implement this, this house bill. That's where a lot of those costs get added up. So, okay, any discussion, any questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, you bet. Thank you, David. And next is the Ward of Contracts, 9A, is auditing services for Bolt, Carlisle and Smith. And Gina, I think I saw that you were online too. Did you have anything to say on this?
I don't. Just that we have dealt with Bolt Carlisle for several years in the past. They're a very good firm to work with. Uh, the two firms that did, uh, submit proposals were both excellent. They came in around the same cost and so, uh, Bolt Carlisle just edged them out. So we would be pleased if Counsel would please approve the contract. It's a five-year contract with two one-year extensions.
Okay, all right. Um, Counsel, there's a resolution on page 30. Oh, Mike had questions and then Bessie?
Yeah, um, I'm gonna probably have to recuse myself from voting on this as my daughter-in-law works for Bolt Carlisle.
Oh.
Okay.
Good for her.
Good firm.
Yeah.
Okay, and Bessie?
Yeah, uh, you know, I've been on the Audit Committee, you know, for many years and, um, they, Bolt Carlisle, they do a great job, but my question is, it used to be that we used to have to change firms once in a while in order to, you know, not have the same one all the time. Is that still an issue? Or, um, is it just because, I mean, do we not have to change them anymore?
Well, best practice is to go for proposal. Um, I think it's every five to 10 years. And so we're doing that. And their proposal just came in better than the other firm that, uh, submitted a proposal.
No, I understand that. I'm, I'm talking about actually, we used to have Coons and Purdue. And then, then we went to another one, but I was thinking that it's good to change, you know, new eyes, that type of a thing.
So I'm not, I'm not the expert on this. Um, Diane would probably be able to answer it. I don't know that we can do that following procurement law.
Okay, you know, I, I don't know. I just didn't like, we used to change about every five years or so. So, all right, thank you. Mm-hmm.
So we, we did, Bessie, but there was always kind of a clause that they could renew. But, um, but yeah, so we used to always kind of have that practice that you would, you know, after the contract, you'd switch auditors, but there's always the and renew it, um, for another length of time. So, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, any questions? Oh, Rich, I see your hand and I see Alex then.
Given, given the fact that we used to switch and we don't seem to know if that's, is or is not, uh, as per law.
Yeah.
We need to know that before we do this. It either is or it isn't. If it's not a problem, fine, let's go ahead and do it. But, um, if there is a statute someplace or something in our own rules that say we should be doing this every five years or whatever, we need to abide by that. So unless we know that, we shouldn't, we shouldn't pass this.
It's, it's not a requirement to switch firms.
Is it good practice?
It can be good practice. Um, you know, so Bolt Carlisle does get a peer review too, that they submit with their proposal, um, that shows that their auditing is, is good. The other thing that Bolt Carlisle, Bolt Carlisle does is they do bring in new members of their team each year. So we do get a fresh look at our books every year that they come in.
I guess what set me off about this is during the Audit Committee meeting, uh, they didn't have everything that they were supposed to have there, right?
Mm-hmm. Well, that was, that was actually partly the city's fault because of the implementation of munis. We were not as prepared with our financial statements as we generally are. We usually have those completed by the end of December. In this case, everything wasn't. They were, um, they were helping us prepare our financials this year. And so really, that was, that was the city rather than the auditors.
Well, then why did we have the meeting?
Because they did have, the, they were substantially finished with the audit. Uh, we were just finishing up the, the document itself. And that is.
Right, the part that you would normally give the Audit Committee, the Audit Committee did not get.
I mean, yeah.
Gave us a report, but the report was incomplete. Um, okay, well.
Their, their report was complete. We just didn't have the financial document ready to go. It is posted on the website. And if you'd like us to email you a copy of it, we can try. It's a pretty big document.
Hey, Alex, you had a question?
So I just, my only question was about the, um, is a three and two one-year extensions. So why are we gonna give them three years and then two one-year extensions? Why don't we just do three years and then come back for an extension at the end of that three-year term?
I'm not sure I understood what you're asking.
Oh, you're giving them five years, but it's three years and two one-year extensions. Why don't we just make it five years? I, I'm, I'm just.
Because, because we want to try to, um, change that up a little bit. We want to be able to have the opportunity to go out for another request for proposals. Um, having those two one-year extensions gives us a little bit of wiggle room in case something comes up and we want to extend it for a year for our convenience.
Mayor?
Okay. Um, yeah, I think, first of all, Mike, did you have a question? Or no, okay, um, Rich, yes.
Extensions are a way to keep somebody online even if they're not the, the, the lowest price, which is inherently unfair. Um, I've been on both sides of that issue with, with contracts.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and gee, if they like you, even though you didn't, I had one happen with LBCC with their gases. I don't like them because they are inherently unfair to a bidder. And it also leaves the new bidder with less reason to give you a, a better deal. Because if, when they get a better deal, if you don't switch, that means, well, they just, you just ran them through a whole bunch of work for nothing. So I guess that's my two bits worth.
Okay, any other questions? All right, Counsel, there's a resolution on page 30. And Mike said that he would be recusing.
Correct. I'll move for the resolution.
I'll second that.
Second? All right, any question? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, I think I heard one. Was that Alex?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Actually, you heard two.
Oh, there was two?
Yeah.
We didn't hear Olson.
I didn't vote because I didn't get it.
I was.
The sound is garbled on this end, so I didn't vote. I couldn't hear what you were saying.
So I think, let's do a roll call. Allison, let's do a roll call on this.
Olson. Counsel, Olson.
That was me. I'm voting yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Bessie Johnson. Yes. Alex Johnson.
No.
Sykes.
Henry recused.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Coburn?
Yes.
Kill him.
No.
Okay, so that's a three-two, so we don't have action. Um, and what would you like to do on this? Because we do need to be able to get our auditing services, so.
Take two one-year extensions off.
Yeah, would it be proper for Mike to vote, even though he thinks he should recuse? I don't think it would change his, um, opinion, would it, Mike? I, I mean, I'm just, I don't want to put words in your mouth. I'm sorry.
No, I just don't wanna have any, uh, look of impropriety.
Sure.
My daughter-in-law is, uh, one of the firm CPAs.
The other option that we have is that we can just bring it back with the other, without the extension to seem to satisfy some of the council members.
Yeah, Bill, what do you want?
Well, let's get a legal opinion from Tom.
Yeah, I was gonna say, in, in order to break a tie, if you've recused yourself, you can come back in and, and break the tie by voting. Just not participate in deliberations. But if you wanna, if you wanna come in and vote to break the tie, you can do that. That's, that's in the rule, so.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we don't have a tie. It's a three-two. We don't, or vote.
No, then it could, it could be a, a tie or it could be a, a passage or two. And that, and then, but your daughter-in-law is not your immediate, um, family, so would not be a financial, you don't have any financial gain in her employment.
No. That will be. She, she may not be my immediate family, but I do have this, I do have business dealings with them.
Oh, okay. I see.
And Mike, you're not required to come back in and vote either. You don't have to come back to, into the vote.
I, I would, I would rather not on this because I don't want this to look muddy.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay, Peter?
Mayor, we meet next on May 27th. How about if we, uh, take this back and, uh, if the council is wanting to take the two-year extensions off and we can look a little further into the best practices of changing auditors, um, and how often that should be and
Okay.
look at it on May 27th.
Okay.
That's good for me.
That's good for me.
I'm comfortable with that.
All right, this held over till May 27th, so. Okay, next item. And this is the Crocker and Gibson Hill Traffic Signal. This starts on page 31. And it's, whose item is this? I think I saw Stacy or Chris. Um,
Yeah, I've got Chris here.
Hello, Chris.
Can you hear me?
Yep, just gotta find you on the screen.
You sure your video, Chris?
We need a video.
I gotta push a button.
Turn your camera on.
Right. There we are.
Okay.
Cameras, you can actually see me here.
All right.
Looks like I'm 500 feet away here. Yeah, so this is, uh, the Ward for Contract for, uh, the traffic signal at, uh, Crocker and Gibson Hill Road. Uh, Emery and Sons Construction Group out of Salem was the low bidder. Uh, at, uh, what were they? $536,512.25. They were the lowest of six bidders. Uh, and uh, this is a traffic signal. Uh, this has been in the works for a while here. Uh, the traffic signal was identified both in the transportation system plan and, uh, in the capital improvement program. And it's basically driven by the ongoing increasing traffic in North Albany due to development that's been taking place over the years. Um, in addition to the traffic signal, uh, which is both a traffic signal and a right turn lane on Crocker Lane, uh, during the design process, uh, Benton County contacted us and asked if we would be willing to partner with them on the construction of a piece of sidewalk on the north side of the road uh, between Crocker and Crittendon Loop. So that's just the short block on the north side, uh, east of Crocker. That segment of sidewalk is a piece of sidewalk that Benton County has agreed to construct, uh, in conjunction with transferring jurisdiction. uh, in conjunction with transferring jurisdiction of Gibson Hill Road from Benton County to, uh, the city of Albany. And they believe they could get, uh, significant cost savings by bundling that work with the traffic signal work that is taking place right there. And so, we did get a good price for that, uh, sidewalk extension project. It was around eighty-five thousand, six hundred dollars total cost estimated for that, that Benton County will cover as part of this work.
Okay. Questions of Chris? I can't, I don't have all the screens up right now, so, um.
I'm good.
Okay, all right. Counsel, what would you like to do with this item then?
I'd love to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
Chris, do you know when this might be, uh, installed?
Excuse me, uh, construction should take place this summer.
Great, great, thanks.
I, I do, I would like to know how many accidents have been in that area in the last, say, eighteen months? Has that been determined?
Off the top of your head.
I don't have that information, uh, so that we could probably find out, obviously. That could be something I, I would go to Vaughn Irish for. I don't know if he's participating in the meeting today.
Counselor Johnson, this is the chief. I can pull that for you fairly easily and send it to you via Peter tomorrow.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and, and Alex, this was a long discussion before you got on. Oh, um, we were looking at whether to do a three-way stop, whether to do a, um, the traffic signal or roundabout and that's made by the council to do the traffic signal. And I've heard from many people mad that we didn't do a roundabout. Many people have read that over and over, so.
No matter what we do, they're gonna want the other things, so, you know.
It's that group of people.
Yep, there you go.
Whoever wants whichever one.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carry. All right, thank you, Chris. That takes care of that item. Next is approval of agreement and this is for Maple Lawn preschool operations. I believe Kim did email us prior to the updated, um, document show. And I'm pretty sure Kim is online here somewhere. And this is something that is great win-win. I really commend staff for coming up with a resolution Maple Lawn to be able to keep, um, the school. Olson, Kim, are you?
I'm here.
Um, there you are. Okay, go ahead.
All right. Well, good evening, mayor and counselors. Um, I am here to get approval to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with, um, GAPS to continue the Maple Lawn preschool program. In the revised version that I sent you today, there were essentially just two changes. And that was essentially just a little bit of language clarification in regards to, um, the school district paying out leave balances. We had called them retirement balances. And then along with that, they wanted clarification on, on getting an estimate as to what that could look like. And so we went back and we took a look at what an annual leave accrual balance would look like for staff and then estimated that they would only take twenty-five percent of their estimated leave and then added that each year so that way they could get a better idea as to what a total cash out would be. So, um, so yeah, I'm more than happy to answer any questions based on the IGA.
Okay. Questions? All right, oh, Mike, and then Bessie.
Does this IGA get us out of, out of Maple Lawn financially completely?
It gets us out of any of the incremental costs with having a program based out of there. We'll still pay to have basic water, um, or you know, our base rate out there. We'll still pay to mow the grass. We'll still pay to have a security system out there. But anything that is involved with having staff regularly out there or with running the program, all of those costs are being covered in this intergovernmental agreement.
So we still own the building?
We still in the building, yes. And we still have access to the basement. Um, we still have access to it during spring break, winter break, the summer, so that we can do programming out there. So essentially, the school district is gonna be covering all of the expenses associated with the staff as well as, um, you know, the programming of the space for nine months a year.
Okay, Bessie?
You have mute, Bessie. Turn on your mic, Bessie.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I thought that we were gonna be totally out of it, you know, um, as far as any expenses whatsoever and I'm wondering why we need the basement and, I mean, I, I don't know, the, something is, just doesn't seem right to me and I can't quite put my finger on it, you know, because, um.
We currently use the basement for program storage anyways. So as, as far as we're concerned, we're essentially, as long as we continue to own the building and don't sell it outright, this is the general basic operating cost that still support our program. So Maple Lawn, they don't technically use the basement currently. That's where a lot of our other program supplies are stored. Um, and so we just wanted to make sure that we called that out in the agreement to make sure that we still got to see value in, in a building that, that we own.
Yeah, and so I'm guessing, okay, in three years, it looks like they can get out of the lease or out of the agreement. And then, um, well, go ahead and answer that and I've got another one, but it just flew out of my mind.
Sure, so it's a three-year with the additional option for renewal for an additional two. Um, the thought is that this gives the school district enough time to come up with their early education model. Uh, but we do, we have made it very clear that this is a transition, um, that Maple Lawn will not continue in its current format indefinitely. We're very lucky that the school district has some Student Success Act dollars to go towards this. So at the end of the agreement, um, the, you know, the premises would be vacated and we would be able to do, I want to say we, I mean, the city and the Park and Recreation Department would be able to do something besides the preschool in that building.
Oh, I see, yeah. On, I, the other thing was, is that, you know, we just, we talked about this last budget season, so I was just kind of curious why, I mean, if we decided that we didn't like this agreement, I mean, here we are at the end of the year again. And so if we don't, then, if we don't agree, then the, and decide not to do it, then, you know, the people, the parents would be in the same situation. So I just wondered why it took a whole year to get the agreement done.
Sure, so, um, Student Success Act dollars were not a given. Um, the school district had to apply for it and the application didn't, I think they were due right around Christmas. And so they didn't actually find out until, you know, into twenty-twenty that they had received the dollars. So we've been working on this for the last two and a half months and just kind of going back and forth to, to negotiate the contract.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, any other questions, counsel? Oh, Rich, uh huh.
When we got finished with this thing, there was quite a lot of acrimony about this. There were people calling us vile things, people calling your staff vile things. We get very explicit instructions. We want to pull the pin on this. And that's, that's the instruction that staff was given. Now, if you look at what this is, this is an extension of what was there beyond what we said we wanted. Now, I know there are some people that want this, but let's understand. When you have three years with a possible two more, at the end of the time, there is no transition going on here. You know, if you want this to look like a transition, we start with where we're at and they start taking things over. It's not a transition at all. What happens is when we come to the end of it, we're right back where we started. They either take it over or we look like the bad guy again. We already did that once. Now, we are not being paid for everything. They're not renting the whole place. We're, we're being paid for nine months of twelve months' worth of use. I mean, you can't put anything in there really in three months. You can't change it over to have someone in there and do something. I mean, the other thing occurred to me is, one of the reasons that were given because our staff, uh, does not qualify for their employment because they're not certified the way they need to be certified. They're perfectly willing to take a product that is, that comes through this system saying, gee, we're doing a good job on one hand and at the other hand saying, well, we don't, we, we can't have these people because they're not qualified. Uh, it's up in the air there. I guess I, I am not understanding why it would be okay to have unqualified people doing something for you in a contract that you couldn't do or the same thing in the same job. I don't, I want to see this thing go away. It has been here. We are sim- making, making it easy for the school district. I mean, three years, if they can't get, get something done in a year, they already had a year. We had a year. People knew that it was gonna end.
So, so Rich, I-
It's the way to go on the city council.
Right. Rich, I, I understand that there was a decision that was made before and I think we need to set aside what was stated and publicly from adults and think about the kids that this is gonna be educating.
Not our job, mayor.
Educating the youth, but it's also, we're joining in with the partnership with the school district and I commend them for coming up and stepping up to the plate, be able to, uh, provide this education for, uh, the children in our community. And I think that's the important part that we need to focus on and set aside any sort of, um, differences that we, that took place before. But I think this is a win-win for the city and with the school district and, and for the community. But, um, Peter, I know you were, um, next and then Bessie.
Okay.
I thought it, I thought it worth, uh, reminding us all that this, uh, during the buildup of the budget for twenty nineteen to twenty-twenty-one, Ed Hodney identified Maple Lawn as having to be cut because he couldn't make the budget. If you'll recall, um, we, uh, went through, uh, extensive efforts to try to recognize revenues in various places and, uh, Chief John Bradner at the time was able to raise, uh, certain fees which afforded some revenue which allowed for at one additional extra year for Maple Lawn, which is what the council approved that under, under the, with the understanding that it was for three reasons. One is that it would give the parents who complained so vociferously some time to find alternative solutions. The second thing was it would give time for the Parks Director to work with nonprofit organizations in the city who might be potential inheritors of the program and could run it. And the third reason, it would give the Parks Director time to work with the school district to perhaps see if, if they could run it. Uh, the council agreed to that with, with the understanding that it would be a transitional thing. It wouldn't be a permanent thing. And the idea was that we would hand off the school to some other operator or close it after that one year was over. And we embarked on that path. Kim came in as a new Parks Director and inherited, uh, this particular issue. It has put a lot of energy into working with, with GAPS to try to make, try to make it work, which was certainly not a given from the very beginning. But from the very beginning that Kim and I started working on this, I emphasized to her and she completely understood that this was a transitional program and that the, the understanding would be with GAPS that it would be a program that they would ultimately take over. And if they couldn't, then we would back out of it. So it is the case, it does feel like, you know, in three years' time, we may be back right where we were. But, um, the, the understanding with everybody at this point is that it's, if that happens, then we close the school because we can't, we can't run it, uh, as, as a city government.
Thank you, Peter. Bessie?
Yeah, see, and I was reading all the information and, Kim, I really do appreciate your work on this because I know, you know, it's hard to, to step into, you know, the doo-doo when you get in here, you know, something that's already been started. But it looks like we're gonna be doing, uh, collecting a pay, you know, billing, collecting and basically, um, I, I don't know, I just thought it was gonna be a, they take over, we're done. And, um, I'm, you know, I, I'm just, I'm a little disappointed that that didn't happen. Is it, is this gonna work? I'm not sure because, um, I, I don't know.
I can, I can speak a little bit more to that as, um, in the final page that has the breakdown, Exhibit A of the, um, of the expenses, we went and charged back, um, time for not only supervisory expenses, um, a portion of our supervisor salary and benefits. We did that as well for our front desk who are going to be doing the billing, working with parents. If we do not enter into this contract, um, essentially that's money that would be left on the table that we would, you know, we would be paying regardless. Um, but we're passing that, uh, cost back to the, the school district, you know, to, to make up for the difference. Additionally, things like, um, our central services charges. These are all things that are a, a pretty good chunk of change. Um, and that granted, if we didn't have the program in there, we would be making some of those changes. But, um, as far as the actual outlay as to financially supporting the program, we've tried very hard to make sure that any additional burden that is required based on continuing the program in-house, that we have gone ahead and built that back, um, to the school district.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? If not, oh, Mike?
Um, this is for Kim. Can we be assured that no city dollars will be used or be spent by the city and not recuperated from GAPS?
Sure, so what we, what we're gonna do with finances, we're actually gonna set it up as a separate GL fund so that that way all of our, um, salary and benefits come out of that, all of our materials and supplies. So that way we have actuals to bill back, um, to the school district. So it won't be lumped in with any of our other recreation programs. It's gonna have its separate line item.
Okay, Bill?
Mike, Rich brings up a good point. I, I think this is a good first step and this thing is, is gonna evolve and it, call it a living document, if you will. The, the goal, as I recall, at, at budget time and the discussion revolved around the issue that the city should not be in the preschool business. I think this accomplishes that. Rich is right. In, in three years, we might be right back where we started. It does buy some time to see, uh, if the school is willing to, um, take a different approach. You know, I don't know that in my mind, that the intent was ever to sell the building. I mean, that's city property and Parks Department and so forth. You know, that, that's a different discussion for a different day. It could be that the school district, uh, moves the program into a different facility. I mean, there's a lot of different options and a lot of things can happen over three years. But as far as I'm concerned, this, this meets the needs. Peter said that it kind of went above and beyond what we, uh, had talked about. You know, I don't know the budget in two or three years is gonna be, uh, any better than what we have right now. It, it most likely will be worse and take years to, to dig out of it. So, uh, the, uh, the intent was met that, uh, we didn't think the taxpayers should be funding a preschool and so I'm, I can support this, uh, this proposal.
Okay, so with that, there is the agreement that starts on page thirty-five. What would you like to do with this item?
I'd make a motion that we, uh, accept the agreement.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in a second. Any more discussion? Okay, motion's been made in a second. Any more discussion? All those Go ahead, Dad.
Yeah, I'd like to say that I really appreciate the school district stepping in to help with this much valued program the city has had in the past. And I want to say thank you to them.
The win-win, so, okay? Uh huh, yep.
Bottom line for me, we said get rid of it. And here it is again. We still have monies we're having to leak through to it. What happens with the staff in the summer? Are we gonna lay them off? Well,
We will.
Uh, everybody that's not there should be gone, right? I mean, it's, it just feels a whole lot like we're being given the runaround and I don't appreciate it.
Speaking to the staffing, we will, we will continue to, that has been the practice, is that they get laid off in the summer. And that has been and will continue on the same way. So that way they're being compensated for the, their time actually in the classroom.
Okay, all right. There's motion in a second. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Was it two? Just Mike and Rich?
Yeah.
For the no? Was that it?
I'd say I reluctantly voted for it because we'll see how it goes.
Okay, all right. So it passes four to two. So a motion carried. Okay, thank you, Kim. And thank you so much for working with the school district and coming up with the resolution to this. So, thank you so much.
It's been wonderful. We're lucky. Thanks.
Okay, next is adoption of the consent calendar and this goes on A, B, and C, which is on the next, next page. And if there isn't any items that need to be pulled off this evening, you know, in a motion.
Move to approve.
I'd like to, I'd like to discuss item C.
Item C. Item C, all of it, or just one?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. So the motion then would be for A and B. Correct, Mike?
That's affirmative.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, item C.
Well, and again, more C one and C two. So Peter, is there some process or procedure where we thank the, the people for the contributions and, and kinda make a big deal out of it? I mean, it, we're not meeting in public, so that's tough to do, but a press release or something so that these people are recognized?
Right, I would, I would, we, we certainly should express our thanks, but I would defer to Shane for any plans that he, he might have.
Yeah, Counselor, what we've done already is we've sent letters personally from me thanking them. And in the case that Country Financial, if they have any sort of social media, we try to tag them and and make people aware of, of the contribution. And, and if you have suggestions or ideas of things to, other things we could do, just let me know.
Well, I think reach out to the paper and of course, it could be in City Bridges and that type of thing, so. I, I think the city council, the mayor should write a letter as well.
Be nice.
All right, well, I'll make a, a motion to adopt item C of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, all right, any more discussion?
We'll get a, we'll get a thank you letter from the mayor drafted, mayor and council.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carried. All right, that's the consent calendar. Next is a report for the multimodal station restroom grant. And Chris, you still there? Chris Bailey?
I'm here. I know you've all been waiting on the edge of your seat, pun intended. Gotta hold your breath for this one. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. In all seriousness. So we brought this item initially at the December second council meeting and then again, we were before you on January twenty-second where you gave us permission to apply for a grant to design and build a freestanding public restroom at the multimodal station. So the grant application was submitted and the bulk of the work was done by Mark Bernard with ODOT Public Transit, who's on the line tonight. If I, if we need him, we can ask for him. We applied for a hundred sixty-four thousand eight hundred dollars through the Federal Transit Administration's Bus and Bus Facilities Grant Program. ODOT received notification that the FTA grant was approved. And Mark called me and asked me to bring this item back to the council tonight to get a definitive vote as to whether or not you want ODOT to accept that grant and award it to the city of Albany. So the grant application included some money for initial maintenance. But ultimately, the costs for operation and maintenance of the restroom facility will be the city's responsibility. That money would have to come out of the public transit fund unless we identified some other funding source in the future. In the previous discussions on this issue, the council had concern about our ability to take on the maintenance costs in addition to everything else. Other concerns are that the mere presence of the restroom would invite nuisance issues to the property. And this is a property that the city has put considerable investment into and that we've worked diligently over the last ten years to set up policies and procedures and ordinances and other things to create a welcoming environment there at the train station. On the other hand, there is, as far as I know, still a need, or at least their perception of a need for restroom facilities in the downtown area. And there's not likely to be another source of funding to construct a new restroom at a lower cost to the city. This grant is an eighty-twenty federal grant, so eighty percent federal funds, twenty percent city funds. To construct it. So with all that being said, I would like appreciate the council discussing and ultimately voting one way or the other, whether or not to accept this grant and build this restroom so that we can demonstrate to ODOT what the city's intent is here. And with that, I can answer questions.
Okay, Bessie?
Yep, Chris, uh, do I remember correctly that ODOT was gonna build it? Construct it?
Uh, no. Oh, no. So the city would receive the grant and we would have to go through the standard engineering process to design and then hire bid out for construction. So it would be a, a regular city capital project.
And so we got the whole hundred sixty-four thousand?
Yeah, so the federal portion of the grant was approved. And then that, what you might be thinking about is match. And so we did have a commitment from ODOT Rail Division to provide some of the match. And we had identified some other potential funding sources that are transit funding sources that could provide the match.
Okay.
So it, our, conceptually, if, if what we have thought out came, came to fruition, the city itself would not be out any money to match the grant. It would be coming from other sources.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So Chris, when we did the multimodal project, which took many years and we had a lot of cost overruns and mostly that was federal dollars that we had to follow, but it was also, it's a historic train, train station and the transit center, which has some extra, making sure that the design is gonna be a good fit for the, for those historic buildings. So you're saying a hundred and sixty-four thousand is what they would give for, that would be the portion that ODOT would pay?
The Federal Transit Administration.
Okay, so, and they do have a lot more layers to follow through when it comes to these types of projects. More administrative costs. I worry that we could even construct it for that. For what all the costs were, were that we had to in, you know, incur years back. And then plus, we would end up having the maintenance cost on top of it. Do you think we can build it for that amount?
I think so. We reached out to some other transit. So City of Camby did a small restroom facility similar to the type that we were looking at and got a, got an estimate from them. We reached out to, there's a manufacturer here in Oregon and they basically make these, the guts of them are sort of a modular design. And, and then you can customize the exterior. So we did talk about we need something that would blend with the historic nature of the structures that are there and got a quote from them. And so I think, you know, we have fairly recent quotes. You never really know, but around, you know, it's worked out to not quite two hundred thousand dollars. And I, I think we felt pretty confident that that was that was a good estimate to get it built. It, we did include an allowance for operating some initial operating expenses, which you can do with this federal transit grant. So that, you know, even if, if the construction cost was a little high, we have a little cushion there. But this would just be construction. It wouldn't be, you know, even if everything went great, we would only have operating funds for maybe the first year. Maybe a little bit more. And then the city would have to pay for maintenance of the facility.
So is there any way we can have the clause in the agreement that if it becomes a becomes a facility that we have people clean out that are not using the transit system, that we would be able to have the option to lock it and only put it for users of the transit system? Is there any way that we can have that clause in there?
I don't know if we could get a clause like that. And even if we did, I'm not sure how we would enforce it. You know, it's part of the need for a restroom there is because Amtrak does that with the restrooms inside the train station. And they only give the code out to people who have an Amtrak ticket. They won't even give the code out to boat bus passengers or other passengers who have a legitimate purpose there. So that is one of the problems we're trying to solve is the lack of an accessible facility for everyone else that's not an Amtrak customer. So I'm not sure if we could get a clause like that. And then I'm really not sure how we would enforce it.
So, so what do we do if it becomes a problem?
Well, I would defer to my friends in Parks and Rec who have dealt with this forever. Yeah, I mean, so part of this, one of the things we looked at is environmental design, that, you know, designed to reduce vandalism and problems. So that's part of the issue. We could cite it in a place where it's near a high traffic area. We can light it appropriately. We can lock it in the evenings, you know, like Parks does with their restrooms. So we can do some things, but you have to anticipate that it's gonna get trashed. Because that's what happens with public restrooms and you need, you know, we would need to design it to try to mitigate that as much as, as much as we could. I don't think that's a good answer.
Okay, Dick's got a question and then Rich does.
Am I right? The buses and trains come and go at times when the station is closed. And even people that have tickets, there's no place to use a restroom. Either getting, waiting for the train or getting off the train. And what a wonderful welcome to the city of Albany. You get off the train and and you gotta go and there's, well, I guess there's some pushes there. That's about it. I think it's a really a poor situation to not have the facilities for people that need, need the use. And those of you that are not as old as I am, you'll find eventually that you can't wait quite as long as you think you might.
That's right.
Okay, Rich?
I guess part of the reason that I remember us going down this road was for the fact that you have homeless people who need a place to go.
Yep.
And that's what brought this whole thing up. Now, while some of them are going to trash the place, I would rather have them be inside than use the bushes. Because that's their choice at this point. And if you can make it out of concrete and steel or, you know, stainless steel and whatever, so it's hard to trash. It takes away, it takes away the argument that, well, gee, don't do anything about the homeless because well, there's no place for them to go. I mean, we haven't fixed that problem yet. This might go a little ways toward fixing it. If we build it out of something that's hard to mangle.
Do remember in our community, the homeless do have a place to go. We have two year-round full-time shelters. So they do have a place to go. Bessie?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I agree with Dick. I mean, if, if you have, if you have buses and trains coming in and at different hours of the night, it just seems reasonable to have a rest, a public restroom, you know? And so I'm definitely in favor of this.
Any other comments? So Mike? Mike?
The problem I, the, the problem I have is the maintenance costs. I, I, I agree that it's needed, but how much is it gonna cost to take care of it? I'd like to know what that number is, so, because if we got it maintained for a year and then after a year, we've got a two hundred thousand dollar structure sitting there that we can't maintain.
Sure. So I reached out to, let's see, Corvallis has a restroom in their downtown transit center. We talked with Salem Kaiser. They have a much larger, their facility is different, so not really as applicable, but still, we talked about their maintenance issues. And then I got one other whose contact I'm forgetting right this minute. And I think, oh, and then of course, I talked with Rick Barnett and Kim and Parks about their costs. And so I'm estimating about twenty thousand dollars a year in janitorial costs, you know, minor repairs, that sort of thing. That's just kind of a ballpark guess based on anticipated the size of the building and what we think might happen.
For one little restroom, twenty thousand a year?
Yep, that makes sense.
Yeah, it has to be cleaned at, at least once a day, if not more. And
We supply.
Fix the things that break. There's a water bill, you know, it's just, it goes on and on.
I, I, I think, I think, I'm sorry, I didn't raise my hand.
Yeah.
Everyone, every human needs a place to go with dignity, dignity.
There you go.
And I also believe that if it prevents us from having people defecating in church doorways or business downtown, or somebody's doorstep or somebody's bushes. And if we encourage them and maybe put a sign inside the door, this is for the community. Take care of, take care of, we encourage them. And, and the message could be as simple as, you know, this facility was put here for the purpose of allowing people to have a public place to use a facility with dignity. Please take care of this. This is for everyone. You know, and we have to get that message out there, whether it be social media or you know, just in, in instilling, ensuring people know the purpose of that building is not just for the homeless, but for the community. And I, I've looked at the bathroom by the church, the port of, by the church. I know they've had issues. But for the most part, it's a clean facility. You know, this is something the city's doing and we make people know, we let people know through messaging, you know, through Bess, not Bessie, through Marilyn's work, through the social media sites for the you know, through best, not besties, through Maryland's work, through the social media sites for the police department, fire department, the City of Albany, that this is a place where people can go that need to go when they need to go. Whether it be visitor coming through town, and maybe that also that message may make Amtrak rethink the way they do things. You know, so it's something that I think is the city should have, every city should have. And more than just one, but this is a good start for us.
Yes.
Amen.
Okay, um, what would you like? Do you want Chris to bring back a agreement for this, for grant application or, or what? I think you probably should make a motion to give her direction.
I, I make a motion. Proposal to get this done, to get the grant.
Yes.
Okay, motion's been made and a second and any further discussion?
Sharon, Madam Mayor, could the motion please be repeated? I missed some of it.
I make a motion, I make a motion that Chris Bailey go out and brings back the grant proposal for us to approve.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, any more discussion? All those in paper say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, okay, Gary. All right, and this will come back to you, counsel, at a later time. Okay, all right, thank you, Chris. Next is business from the council. Um, Dick, you're up on the top of my screen. Do you have anything?
None at this time.
Okay. All right, Mike?
The only thing I'm concerned about right now is the 17% cut, which is gonna affect their state police office in Albany being closed down, which will put an added burden on our law enforcement. And I don't know if there's something we can do to send a message that uh, Kate Brown and those individuals in Salem need to look at other places to cut and not cut an essential service as law as Oregon State Police. I'd really wish we could send something to, to them and there's other places I believe, and I think everybody here could agree with, that we could find very rapidly that we could cut um, and make things better. The other thing is, is, is as an employer and what's going on with this COVID, I'm really disappointed in the employment division of the State of Oregon. Because it's affecting my people. It's affecting all kinds of people in this, in this community. Because they haven't got their act together and it's affecting us negatively. Um, it, it seems to me that every employer has to pay unemployment insurance for an issue like this. And then when you turn around and have to lay somebody off or furlough them for any reason, they can't get the funds that they need to stay um, paying their bills. And you've got uh, people in Salem that don't seem to understand that. And uh, I'm just a little disappointed in those two things. They, they're not doing what they were elected to do, in my opinion. That's all I got.
Bessie, do you have anything?
Well, to piggyback on what Mike was saying, you know, this, the state was given, in 2009, they were given millions of dollars of fed money to update their computers. And the more I researched into it, is the money is still sitting there. And that's just ridiculous. I mean, here we have people needing this money, not, not in a month or two, they need it now. And I think this is just a poor reflection on the state that they have, they complain about no money, no money, and then they have all that millions sitting there because they couldn't do their job. And that really irritates me. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, all right, Bill?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Uh huh. Okay, and um, Alex?
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with Mike. No, I agree with Mike and Bessie. I, I believe that, I read the report, I looked at the article on the, you know, millions of dollars sitting there for the unemployment system. I'm directly affected by the grandkids and kids of people that are in my community, my senior community. And um, I've made an effort as best I possibly can to buy local from local shops. My mom and pops here in town, you know, and when I get takeout from somebody local, I tip well. Um, I just think that we could have handled things better if we'd have done better sooner when the money was available to us, to, to their government, state government. Other than that, um, I continue to see wonderful acts of kindness throughout the city. Uh, more people are out walking. Uh, people have seemed to have slowed, slowed down in the communities. Another thing, Chief Harden for responding to one of my constituents, um, she's reported that people slowed down in her neighborhood. They put one of those traffic uh, monitors with the mile per hour on it. And she seems pretty happy with that, so I do appreciate that, chief. And uh, other than that, um, let's keep, be optimistic, let's keep this thing moving and keep our city so we can get it back open and put people, put people back to work.
Amen.
Yeah. Okay, and Rich?
Yeah, I guess let me, let me also agree with the other three. Um, my first wife in 1980 uh, worked for Department of Ed and they were using Cobal then, and it was old then.
Exactly.
Um, I mean, she would come home going crazy, pulling her hair out about the fixes they had to do to get with this quote, "old" system. So I'm, I'm 100% with you guys.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing is, we're looking at, who knows what's gonna happen here? And, you know, in my life, I have several pieces of it. I, I just vine from one organization because, I mean, I, I think the words that I used were when your feet are on fire, don't be dumb enough to, to juggle gasoline. And I think what we need to do is remember that our feet are on fire. Um, it's gonna go out. But we don't know exactly what it's gonna look like. And a whole lot less spending, if we don't have to do it, we should look at it very closely. Because in three months, I mean, if you're talking about 40% of small business dying, now that's the US sense, the, the US Chamber of Commerce. And I, I understand that that is a number that is inflated above normal, but you know, with all small business dying in, you know, 90% dying in five years, I don't know what percentage of that is just put over the edge because of COVID-19. But, I mean, our feet are directly on fire at this point. Um, it's not life-threatening right now, but the juggling gasoline is not a good idea.
Okay, all right. Um, and then me, the only thing I was gonna tell you, I think each of you will be receiving a few masks, probably in your mail next. The US Conference of Mayors sent a package to me of um, kind of the little stretchy type um, mask. They're, I think a dark, they're a dark blue. So they sent 120 of them and then they're giving us an order of, I believe it's 4,500, I think we put an order in um, for free. So this would be kind of nice to keep at City Hall, maybe for council meetings that um, if we needed, wanted to have masks there available and for say municipal court, have extra masks. This would give some extra masks for um, us to be able to have at City Hall, so. Uh, I thought, oh, must be a catch by giving this, but no, this was funded through the US Conference of Mayors. So, but look for, you'll be getting some of those in your um, your council mail. Okay, uh, that is it that I have. And Peter, you had an update for us?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor. And, and I appreciate all of you uh, sticking around for such a long evening this, this evening. The first thing I'd like to do is call upon Seth, who uh, will brief you on an idea, a proposal that uh, he has worked with Jeff Blaine and Chris Bailey.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and councilors. I know it's been a long night and I'll try to be brief here, but we feel some sense of urgency on getting this in front of you tonight. Uh, as you know, business retention is, is important now as it's ever been, probably more so in fact, supporting our existing business. And one of the primary challenges with businesses that are still open, albeit at lower production levels in many cases, is that their fixed costs don't decrease with fixed, or with decreased production. And uh, in fact, as you also know, we put out uh, an emergency response survey a couple of weeks back in conjunction with all of the touchpoints, agency touchpoints that help business support, like the Chamber, the AVA, ADA, SBDC and ourselves. And uh, in there, we were asking folks what they need in the near, medium and long-term future as best they can tell. And of the list of uh, support elements that we listed, things like loans, grants, forgivable loans, as well as a number of other non-financial resources. One of the things we pointed out or questioned them about was um, the potential for offsetting their water and wastewater costs that again, at a base level are fixed, no matter what their production levels are. And in that question, I made sure to ask them why that would be important for them. And unanimously, those who responded that that would be helpful indicated that anything that we can do to help offset their fixed costs would be helpful to redirect that money towards uh, other elements to keep their business alive, whether it be payroll, um, inventory or otherwise. And to that end, we've been working with Public Works and Community Development, like Peter mentioned, to propose to you and create a water and wastewater credit program that would help offset a portion of a business's fixed costs uh, for a fixed amount of time. So what I wanna do this evening is just briefly outline the program at a very, the proposed program at a very high level and then give you the opportunity to ask questions where you would like some more clarity if that works. So just to step back briefly, uh, the source of the funds we're talking about is a $500,000 fund, Economic Development Fund for both water and sewer. These were dedicated some years ago by a previous council with the intent on using those funds to help support business retention as well as development expansion and potentially recruitment as well. What we're proposing is that we, you would choose to allocate half of those available resources right now um, to, with the purpose of assisting and maintaining uh, economic recovery of existing businesses that are actually still producing right now. And that would help to alleviate immediate fixed costs associated with maintaining water and wastewater services. And of course, that frees up working capital to that business to direct those funds towards something else. Uh, here's the basic structure of that program. It would provide a six-month water and/or wastewater fee credit. And that credit would be based on the qualifying business's average six-month use of uh, 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 or cost relative to water and wastewater. It would be applied as a lump sum to their utility account. If for some reason the business closed its account or went out of business, that money would simply be unused and returned to the city. Qualifying applicants would include, as proposed at least, uh, any small business within the City of Albany per the SBA's definition of small businesses, which is 500 employees or less. And you might find it interesting to note that um, that only precludes two for-profit entities in the entire city, the vast majority of which are well under 500 employees. Uh, the qualifying applicants would need to show that their revenue, self-certified that their revenue was affected by uh, the COVID-19 crisis. And it wouldn't apply to government or residential accounts. And we would only um, apply one credit per utility per business if they requested that. We would propose that the credit program be maxed, maxed out, or uh, the max credit would be $10,000. So if a business had multiple accounts or maybe one, one account for water and one for wastewater that exceeded their, their six-month average cost exceeded $10,000, they could only qualify up to $10,000. However, if the business only say averaged uh, maybe a thousand dollars over that same period of time, the max that they could qualify for, for a credit would be a thousand dollars as well. Um, of course, the qualifying business would need to opt in themselves and apply. Um, we would anticipate holding the application period open for a two-week period. If need or desire to access these funds exceeds the amount available, there's a couple of options to, to you. One might be choosing to increase the amount of available funds. We could also take all qualified businesses and simply do a lottery uh, of those who qualified based on the amount of available funds. Um, and those would be the two primary, two primary options. Um, we have it fairly well ironed out how we could administer this at a very low cost. Systems. And uh, with that, we'd appreciate some guidance from you. If this is something you wanna pursue, it's really a choice of how to use existing funds that have been dedicated for this very purpose, albeit in a new fashion. Um, but we staff could do this on a fairly short order if this is what you wanted us to, to pursue. So with that, I'd welcome questions. And I think Chris and uh, Jeff, who we've been working with closely on this, are available for questions as well.
Yeah.
Okay, Bill and then and then Bessie?
I, I guess just a, a suggestion, uh, and I'm thinking of the way uh, some of the fiasco with the way the government distributed some money. Good example is, you know, these small businesses and you know, Ruth Chris, State House got a whole bunch of money and there were some others and, and a lot of backlash from that. You mentioned the lottery system. I wonder if there's some way, or if it's even worthwhile to consider having uh, groups of businesses. Um, you know, there aren't too many businesses, uh, I, I don't know how many businesses are with hundreds and hundreds of employees, but I'd like to see the people with, you know, 20 or fewer employees, uh, have a fair shot at the money as opposed to a, a bigger company coming in or several companies and taking $10,000 each. And before you know it, the money's gone and a little mom and pop never had a shot at it.
Yeah, I agree with Bill. I, you know, I, I'd like to see the smaller businesses uh, get them if possible. And then Seth, uh, did you say these were gonna be grants or loans? Or I, I, I missed that part.
Yeah, I, I said grant, so it would really be a credit applied to the account. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One, we don't really have the capacity to apply this credit as a loan and, and, and do any kind of significant follow-up or underwriting for it. So it's administratively quite difficult to do that. And I think the other thing just to look at is the precedence for use of these funds historically. Um, without exception, I believe it's always been grants.
Okay, thank you.
So Mike and, so my thing is that, I, I think it's a great idea, however. Um, I think there should be some stipulations on this. I know that businesses locally have been receiving the PPP funds for this very thing uh, from the federal government. And there's several businesses that have received that money, because I'm gonna, I'm a part of networking groups and I get, people tell me what they've received. Some companies have gotten 100,000, some have gotten 80,000. I think companies that have received those huge amounts of PPP funds should not be eligible. Uh, because the mom and pops, like Bill was saying, were, were left out or they haven't received any funds yet. So if a person, if a company has received operating funds from the federal government for their payroll and for their utilities and for their mortgages, I think they should be not allowed to apply, especially in the first wave of this. And then they're to give those mom and pops the local Albany, Albany companies the ability to get those access to those funds they need the most. Um, I, I think that when, like Bill was mentioning, Harvard got a $40 million PPP loan, or fund. You know, really, they got a $40 billion endowment, but they got $40 million from the federal government. So I, I think that we need to do this smartly, but if they, companies receive a huge PPP payout, whether it be 60,000 or whatever it is, for this very reason, then they shouldn't be eligible to participate in this. for this very reason, then they shouldn't be eligible to participate in this program.
So Rich, and then Mike.
Yeah, you say it's not easy to make a loan. You know, you give me $500,000, and I can set up a whole lot of loan systems. I mean, giving the money away is stupid. You can make a low-interest loan for five years or three years or something. I mean, if a business is not good enough to pay back a loan in three years, that means they're going to fail anyway. I mean, there isn't any reason to give people money. I mean, yeah, we want to support them, you bet, and it should be the little guys primarily. But to just give it to them? No, our feet are on fire. We're juggling gasoline here. It's a waste of money.
Okay, Mike?
If we go forward with this, I have to agree with Alex that if they got PPP or EIDL funds from the government, I don't think we should piggyback on that. And the second point is, is I have to agree with Rich that there's got to be a way that, instead of granting it, that we can give them, say, a 0% interest loan or something of that nature. Even the PPP is, has a 1% loan on it, loan fee on it. And the EIDL has a three points, up to a 3.75% loan interest rate on it. So I would have to agree with both Alex about the PPP or the EIDL and Rich on the loan amount, loaning the money, not granting it. The other thing is, is if you grant it, there's tax implications for the company that takes it, both ways, whether it's a grant or whether it's a loan. There's definite tax implications for the small company. Especially if it's a grant, they consider it income. And once it's considered income, you have to pay taxes on that amount. If it's a loan, they don't have to. So there's definite, for small businesses that are having trouble granting the money.
Could be problematic.
Could be problematic, and if we grant it to them, we should technically, I think, send them a 1099 and send that to the federal government, and they're going to have to pay taxes on that, I believe.
They will. Bill?
I don't know, Mike. I don't know what the tax implications are, and that's, you know, made for each business to figure out. But I guess the counterargument, Rich, is that the money is in an Economic Development Fund. And I could see a potential use for that, or you would just give it to a company that, you know, is intending to locate here. So, you know, the old deal, the old adage in businesses, it's either to keep a customer than it is to go out and get a new one. It's also easier to keep a business here in town and keep them healthy than it is to recruit a new one. So I don't know that I've got a problem with the money being a grant along those lines of trying to keep a business healthy.
I guess seeing where these funds came from, and I know, Bill, you and I were both on that Water Task Force years ago when we did establish this Economic Development Fund, which was there for, you know, being able to recruit businesses or retain existing businesses, or if they're going to be mostly expanding. I think if Floyd Collins was watching right now, he'd probably be livid for, you know, going down this path because he was really protective of funds over the years. But it is the same, if it was going to end up being a business retention expansion as a grant, then this would be retaining businesses, you know, with a grant. But I do, I really think it should be more the mom-and-pop type business that did not get any sort of assistance, any other grants, you know, from the PP and P, you know, program. I mean, it's, it wouldn't, to me, I think it should be more geared for, you know, business that did not get any source of other funds, and then also that they were impacted and shut down, you know, during the, you know, during the shutdown. So, because there were, there are some businesses that I heard that did get funds that were still going about their business, but they were able to be able to receive funds. And yet, then I hear from folks that didn't get a dime, and they're struggling and cannot stay open. So I really, for going down this path, I really think it needs to be, make sure we're, you know, feel good about the program that really helped retain a business and helped one of our small businesses. But going 500 employees or less, I think is way too high.
I agree.
And Bill, you say like 20? Was, is that what you were saying? Or somebody said 20, and I think that's, that could be somewhere those numbers, but.
Well, I said 20. The idea is to try and give us. When I talk about the definition of a small business, the 500 people or less, that's not my definition. I mean, mine would be a small, 20 or 30 people.
Right. Yeah, Bessie?
I was going to say also, too, if we go with the smaller businesses, we could help more. You know, you help the bigger ones, and it's up to 10,000, then you can only help so many. And so if you have the smaller businesses, we could actually help more and do more good, I think.
Yep. Dick, have you, do you got any thoughts on this, Dick?
Council Kellen has a comment.
Okay, and let me just, let me check with Dick if he's got comments. Anything, Dick?
Well, the problem I see with giving away free money, anybody who doesn't apply is kind of crazy. So I think a loan would really be better than giving money away. And I agree that it should be small, struggling mom-and-pop businesses that get it rather than the big ones. And I think of the federal program that I hear that Boeing, for instance, they got a great big chunk of help money, and they still have their production lines going. So, yes, I think small businesses, and I think a very low-interest loan would be a better idea than give away. If everybody applied, up to 500 employees, do we know how long the money that we're talking about would last? Would it be six months or a year?
That'll be to be determined.
Staff thought about that?
Certainly thought about it. Actually, I think Jeff Blaine had a comment before I jump in, but.
Right. I think Rich was before Mike.
Well, I guess if you, if you make it a loan instead of a grant, one, you haven't thrown the money away. You have the possibility of losing it, just like you would anyway. But if, if you wait, if it's however many dollars in three years, you don't have to pay for it for two years or three years or something like that at no interest. It is, while the problem is happening, you are giving them the money just like it was a grant. And if they are successful in saving their business, then they'll have the money to pay it back. And then you can put it back in the Economic Development Fund and help somebody else.
Okay, Mike, you had. Oops, I think you muted yourself, Mike.
Yeah, I did. Going on Bill's comment of a small business. The Chamber of Commerce defines a large business as anybody over 35 employees. So I think Bill's right on. If we say somewhere in the neighborhood of 35 or lower, or something like that, is a small business. Anything over that, say, 30 employees, is considered a large business. So that way, to Bill's comment, we get more coverage with the money that we have out there for people.
Yeah, yeah, Bessie?
Yeah, I'm kind of looking at Seth's face here, and I'm thinking, okay, the grant, you give the money. If we do a loan, which kind of makes sense, too, are we equipped? And this goes to Seth, Peter, anyone, are we equipped to do loans like that?
Jeff Blaine has a comment on that.
Yeah, Jeff?
Yeah, the answer to that is no. I think if you're collectively of the mind that any type of program of this nature would need to be structured as a loan, I'd ask you not to act on that tonight. As I sit here and have thought about these types of things in the past, especially when we're talking about a relatively small dollar amount and the number of types of loans that you would be trying to manage, and the budget requirements associated with tracking and managing loans. Our, Chris and mine's department is not structured to do that. There'd be a significant time and cost associated with that. Just unless there's, if you were wanting to explore that further, I'd want to put some brain power to that outside of this. As far as some other things that were brought up, as far as the PPP monies that might have been received, or allocating funds to a different definition of what small business is, I'd really need to rely on Seth to respond to our ability to actually verify employee numbers and recipients of those other funds, whether that's doable or not. You know, the bottom line here is, I think you have, you have staff that's, you know, sensitive to all the things that are going on around us in the community. We have Economic Development Funds that have always been used as grants historically. What it's historically been for capital-type projects, right or wrong. That's the way, that's the way they've been done in the past out of these two funds. Snow Temp, American Legion, those are some examples that come to mind. This is, this is a different way of allocating those funds, but that's how they've been done in the past. So that's, this was an idea that came forward and trying to address that. Every idea that we have isn't going to be a good one, but we don't get to implement these on our own, and we have to flush them with the council. And we appreciate the opportunity to be able to pitch ideas and talk about whether they're good or bad.
I mean, Seth, I'm wondering, seeing the time here this evening, and we probably won't come up with the program. Maybe bring back to us with some of the questions. Should it end up being a loan? Should it be a grant? And then the council can make the choice at the site, you know, what amount of employees, the maximum amount.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Seth. We recently gave, you know, we spent several hundred thousand dollars for the loans for small business. And we, and we used the company for that. Why can't we use the same company to administer this process?
That's a good question, and I was going to comment on that. So thank you, Council Johnson. The main reason is, in talking with them, administering what the amount of these loans would really be in reality, we're talking pretty small dollars. It doesn't make sense for them to, the cost of administering it, as Jeff mentioned, for them, it's a ten for us. It's very, it's expensive to have 30, 40, 50, 60, 100 loans at $1,500. So the long-term burden for doing follow-up and underwriting is expensive relative to the amount of the loan. So it doesn't really make sense for anyone to approach loans at that value. I'll just comment, Mayor, I'm happy to come back to you guys. That's fine. And I recognize wholly and respect what some of the concerns that have been expressed are. And I think it's important to think about as you mull this over. Is it the optics that we're worried, that you're concerned about of dealing with businesses, say, over 25 or 30 people, or something else? And the reason I want to point that out is because if you actually look at the businesses we're talking about in our community, we're not talking about, for example, Boeing or some massive corporations. We're really talking about, most businesses have, you know, between 1 and 40 employees. The lion's share of them have that many. And, and so it's not like we're talking about giving money necessarily away to large corporations that have no vested interest or ownership in our community. So I just want to touch on that. And then the last thing was, in terms of having received federal, federal resources from the CARES Act thus far, the way that this has been approached by everybody, including the state right now, who we're applying right now to their RFP to recapitalize our emergency loan fund, is it has to be self-certifying. So in the case of the state, they're also targeting those who have received no federal funds to this point that were derived from the CARES Act. And it's up to the business to self-certify whether they've received those or not. And it's, it's not so much a philosophical question as some other kind of question to say, do we want to add additional support to those who have received federal funds or not? And I know that the case in Albany has been widely mixed, and we don't have a good way of tracking overall relative to the number of businesses who are here, whether they've all received or many have not received. I know the lion's share have not received any kind of federal dollars, whether it be the miniscule grant attached to the EIDL loans or the forgivable or non-forgivable portions of PPP. So just want to put that out there for you.
Okay. Bring it back. Okay. Right? Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Very briefly, give you a snapshot of how our finances have been impacted by COVID-19 thus far. So today, about $111,000 in overtime materials and supplies and equipment. And that amount is reimbursable at a rate of 75%. Non-reimbursable expenses of $324,000 have been incurred, which primarily includes personnel time used for COVID-related activity. And this is an extra pay, but it does take time away from other city activities. Again, this is not, that's not reimbursable. We've felt downward impacts on revenue from franchise fees and privilege taxes, the municipal courts closure, ambulance service, and planning and building inspection services. But each of these will likely climb back at varying rates as we resume normal operations. It's too early to tell if the slowdown in pre-app meetings and the slight decrease in interest in new development are temporary anomalies, or if they're the beginning of longer-term trends. In our utilities, we're experiencing a slight decrease, about 1.5% to 3% in water production. There's a slight increase in the number of door hangers that go out. But again, it's too early to tell if this will translate into a loss of revenue. The crushing impact has been felt in two specific areas. Parks, close to $200,000 in revenue that's been lost or foregone and that will never return, as well as the morale blow to a team that rightfully prides itself on its summer programming and the Art and Air Festival. And the second area is TLT. And TLT revenues at an unprecedented low, and predictions by the state's travel and tourism agency are pretty grim for 2020 and 2021. About 40% to 50% of originally anticipated revenue. Travel Oregon's laying off nearly 30% of its staff, as well as making other cuts as a response to their own budget hits. The city, as you probably know, is required to spend at least 53% of its TLT revenue on tourism-related spending. For Albany, that's included things like the ABA, the Northwest Start and Air Festival, the ADA, the trolley, the Monty House, the airport. And we've always budgeted. And we've, we've always budgeted the funds using the city's conservative approach, assuming that the revenues will come in, but estimating on the low side. But TLT revenue can only be spent if it comes in. So now we're working on a methodology by which actual TLT revenues will be distributed on a pro-rata basis to outside agencies while balancing our budget for the remainder of nineteen, twenty, and twenty twenty-one. So severely reduced TLT revenue will require us and all TLT recipients to be creative and innovative in the approach to service delivery. With only forty to fifty percent of the anticipated revenue available in twenty to twenty-one, the cuts will have to be significant. Now, as I've mentioned to you all before, cities in Washington and California are reliant upon sales tax revenue. They've seen immediate massive losses of revenue. Parks revenues and transient lodging taxes have seen drastic losses here, but we're not reliant as heavily upon sales tax. In our own state government, as we talked about earlier before, as reliant as they are upon tax, income taxes for revenue, we'll have to make drastic cuts. And you heard the figure seventeen percent earlier tonight. With property taxes, our primary source of general fund revenue, we don't suffer immediate impacts other than the unanticipated expenses and revenue losses I've outlined above. Our long-term impacts may be felt if a recession drives property values down. And it also remains to be seen what will happen with state shared revenue. Fuel taxes will take a big cut. Perhaps uh not so big in alcohol and marijuana and tobacco, but they too will see cuts. So we'll keep you apprised as things develop, but I wanted to give you a a quick uh snapshot of uh COVID-related impacts. Tomorrow, you you may have seen that tomorrow the governor's having a media event at ten o'clock at which uh they'll announce uh the county counties that will be opening on May fifteenth. So that'll be, which is Friday. So that'll be a a very uh important announcement. And then lastly, I wanted to to, I think Kim LaDain is gone now, but uh she has uh done such a fantastic job maintaining her positive attitude in the face of uh the cuts that Parks is facing. So we're uh fortunate to have her leading Parks and Recreation. And thank you for the extra time I took this evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's going to be some um challenging times with budget. We thought last budget was bad. It's like it's going to be a tough one. So, but thank you so much. Um, anything, that was it, Peter?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, um, so counsel, that's it for our business except for executive session. But we do have a meeting, our next one's May twenty-seventh. That'll be our regular council meeting, then we'll go back to work sessions on June eighth. And if there isn't anything else, then I will read the long script for everybody as we're going into executive session. But everyone else that has attended, thank you so much for attending our city council meeting.
Ma'am, this way, yeah, just give us a couple.
Mayor, this way, yeah, just give us a couple.
Point six six oh two D, representatives of the news media and the designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the go to meeting at this time. At the end of the executive session, we will return to our open session. And the go to meeting will be reopened to the public. Members of the public should disconnect from the meeting now and then re-enter the meeting. Your screen will display a message waiting for the City of Albany to unlock the meeting. Keep your screen open. When the council returns to open session, we will unlock the meeting and you will automatically rejoin them. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be made in this executive session. I now recess.
Yes, ma'am. Uh meeting is unlocked and anybody that was waiting should be able to come in now.
Okay, so now we'll reconvene the regular session at ten oh five PM. So we're having a later meeting tonight, folks.
Yeah.
And um and with that, it's all go. It's recording. Jorge, okay, all right. So council, you'll need to um take action on this. If you um want to approve the single role memorandum of agreement um contract to March two thousand twenty four for the fire department. Okay. All right, there's a motion. And a second, any discussion?